Join us at home as we convene the Tuesday, October 11th, meeting of City Council. If we could stand, I'll have the invocation. We pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for our city, state, and federal governments. We ask for a special blessing on our cities tonight and our citizens. Especially, we ask for a blessing for those who serve in our police and fire departments, as they protect our public safety. Please be with those in our military who serve in foreign lands. And we ask for a portion of your wisdom as we deliberate the items that affect our citizens here at home. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. And before we get to our audience for visitors, Randy, you have a new member of staff that you'd like to...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community, charity, if you'd come up. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Charity Kabaza. She is joining us, if you could go to the lectern. She's joining us as our economic development coordinator. Today is her first day. And even though I have made Dave swear that our economic development coordinator would not work on the seafood festival, because she came four days before the event, I gave her a one-time exception. Welcome.
And that office is all seafood festival, believe me. And I don't think it could be avoided. So I'm really looking forward to it. I'm really looking forward, as a citizen of Batosan, who's always watched things, and I give all of us many comments about things you'd like to see happen, here's my opportunity to make some things happen. I'm really looking forward to it and excited by it.
We're looking forward to your help here on behalf of our city, and good luck with your new boss. Okay? And welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll open the audience for visitors for anybody who wants to speak to City Council on any subject. There seem none, no people willing to speak at this time. I guess we'll move forward to the approval of the minutes. Could have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session of September 26, 2011.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Comments or concerns? Not Judy, please.
Councilwoman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
I said aye, I'm sorry.
He got it out.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Vennall?
Abstain.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one abstention.
And the minutes of the work sessions?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes of the work session of 26 September 2011.
Second. Any motion made and seconded? Don't think there'll be any comments. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vennall?
Abstain.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one abstention.
And now, I move to unfinished business. And this would be the second reading of an ordinance amending Article 11, Village Commercial District of the zoning ordinance.
Ms. Mayor, the staff is prepared to make the presentation if you'd like. Certainly, to answer any questions, to refresh your memory a bit, there was one item of continuing discussion that was part of that evening's discussion. It related to whether or not to make the proposed amendments to Section 11-3.1 pertaining to the standards of consideration relating to conditional use permits. At that time, Mrs. Crawford and perhaps others had concerns that the change was going not in the desired direction, but there was certainly discussion on council as to what the practical impact of the two different sets of language was. Question was referred to the city attorney, who is here and can speak to that question now or at any time you think is appropriate.
Well, when I read the original section, when it said that the city council may approve a use as a conditional use only if it conforms, in other words, it read as though that was the only thing city council could look at in granting the conditional use permit. And I felt as though that the city council may want to look at additional things beyond just what was listed here. So I changed the language to say that they would look at these things, but not to limit it only to the four items listed below. That was the only reason for the change, to prevent you from being restricted to a very narrow focus, because you may get an unusual type of project, the one that you're perfectly comfortable with, but you may want to ensure that those conditions are also included. In the way the old language was, if you could only look at those items, then I was concerned that you would lose some ability to attach additional conditions to your approval. So my intent was, may not have succeeded, but my intent was that you would grant the conditional use permit, looking at these items, but what other conditions you may also want to consider, in that the developer comes in and says, you know, well, I'm willing to do this or do this, as inducement to you to grant the conditional permit, then you want that included in the conditions. That was the rationale for the change.
Give us some additional flexibility. Tracy?
Do you see how my reading of the modified language indicates that it doesn't need to conform with the four criteria?
Yes.
Is there a way that we could word it so that my concern is addressed, but yours is also? You're the...
I am sure that we can make some type of language that would say that you would consider the four items below and such other conditions as council may deem appropriate, something like that. I think we can do that.
My concern, though, lies with the word "simply consider." Because once we consider, just because we consider that the noise, you know, would be comparable to other uses, or that the traffic impact would be mitigated, just because we've considered it doesn't mean that it would be so. Though I liked the, I don't know necessarily the word "only," but I did like the word "conforms with." Because I think my goal is to make sure that these four, if we're going to have any items at all, why list, maybe why list anything? If we're going to have these items, we want to make sure that they are, these conditions are met, not simply considered.
But that's the difference in my interpretation.
Right.
My interpretation was, when you look at a conditional use permit, there are certain things that you will consider in making your decision. If you put it in that you have to do this, then you've made a mandatory following. The council can only react in one particular way, and I was trying not to have that happen. My goal was exactly 100% opposite of yours. I will say, I was not of the opinion that city council would look at A, B, C. If they were okay, then you had a conditional use permit. I was trying to say they'd look at A, B, C, but they could look at X, Y, Z at the same time. And they didn't have to agree that everything was perfect. They may say, well, the traffic noise is close, but, you know, we're comfortable with what this is based on whatever circumstances exist with that particular development. That was all my intent was.
Okay.
If you want to have it some other way, I'm perfectly willing to sit down with the planner and do whatever is necessary.
I think the majority of us are ready to move forward, but can I just make a suggestion? And Councilwoman Crawford, if you can look at just adding these words, and just, item one would read, "The city council may approve the use of a conditional use permit upon consideration of, but not limited to, the following standards and criteria."
That'd be perfectly fine with me.
And that would, is that then, if we word it that way, is that doing, is that giving more leeway to city council than we have right now?
Yes.
Yes.
That's my problem. I like us being restricted. And...
That's kind of like signing a no-tax pledge. That takes the thought out of the process. I think this council for a conditional use permit needs to put all the thought and research into a conditional use permit that we should, and we should have the flexibility, and it should send a message to a developer that, hey, they're willing to listen to what I'm going to offer them, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to accept it. But I think we need that flexibility.
And I just philosophically disagree. I think the, I think government needs to be limited. So it's just a philosophical difference.
Okay. End of the discussion. Anybody prepared to make a motion in either direction?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 11, Village Commercial District, as written.
Second. I have a motion made and seconded. We have further comments? As I remind us, I guess what you've proposed here didn't include additional languages, so I have what Wayne is saying, we'll do these four, we'll only be looking at these four things.
Gene, you asked for additional comment. Let me make an additional comment, okay? Wayne wasn't here when we had those comments, and Tracy's made it clear that she thinks government should be limited, and I don't know that I disagree with that, okay? And in some conversation that she and I had in very early stages, before we even had the last council meeting, we had a brief discussion on it, and the things that were brought up was, there's no concerns for this council, but this passes a resolution for future councils that may be much more lenient, and although there are things put out there that are guidelines for them to use, the wording of this, what might enable them to say, stuff that, we're going to go ahead and do this anyway. And so more liberal councils may be enabled to do things that we would not do. And so the thought was, let's keep some reins on the council. And that was the thoughts that were passed, at least between the two of us, and we had some brief conversation. I don't know that that's incorrect. I think Wayne's thought of giving the council more latitude is good, because things may come up that we're not aware of, right? We just, and if we're limited to those things, okay, then, as Buddy said, somebody might want to offer a new project, or a new building, or some kind of concept that is beyond those and different than those, and if we keep what we've got, we might not be able to do it. So I appreciate what Wayne did, okay, but don't know that we ought not to have some kind of attitude, a way to say both, do both.
My personal preference would be, I think the mayor's suggestion was well-taken, that if you add the words "but not limited to," which would clarify that you can look at the items below, and then other items as may be presented, to me, indicate that council is looking beyond just the four things that are listed here. I like that addition to it personally.
And I don't know that I disagree with that.
Okay. All right, we have motion made and seconded. I hear no vision to the motion, so... Okay. All right. So Judy, please.
Councilman Southall?
Does this include the words that Wayne just gave?
No.
No.
As written.
No.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
No, for same reasons Bud just pointed out.
Councilman Vennall?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
No.
And Mayor Hunt?
No.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of three to four.
I would like to...
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I would like to move that we amend that motion and insert the words that Wayne just mentioned. Can't amend the motion. The motion's been... Oh, I'm sorry. Not the motion. Amend the ordinance to include the words that Wayne mentioned. So what I'd be saying is... After the phrase "upon consideration of, but not limited to," is that what you would put?
Yes, yes.
Following standards and criteria.
Here's our second.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Questions, concerns, or comments?
I'd like to make a comment and thank you all for hearing me, and just saying that I don't like "upon consideration of." I wanted something more definite, so that will explain my...
I understand. Let me say one thing to all of council. Number one, I think it's a big win for all of the city and for this council that we're here tonight. Because I'm going to tell you that the lack of village and village commercial is something that we're trying to fix. I'm thrilled that we're here talking about it. And if we're just concerned about a few words here and there, moving forward is much more important than what we can change at a later date, once we get some runtime. Right now, we don't even have any ability to do runtime without it. I'm, you know, wholeheartedly agree, I could have gone with it necessarily, either way, because it's doing the overarching goal. And I hope that, you know, we can come together on that point and kind of move forward, so... All right, anybody else?
Just to comment, Gene, I also appreciate the council being able to sit down and have a civil conversation about the differences in modifications and working together.
Okay. Any other thing else? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vennall?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
No.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item under unfinished business is an ordinance amending Article 1, general provisions, Section 1.3 of the zoning ordinance by adding definitions for age-restricted residential and also for financial institutions.
You may recall from the last meeting, Mrs. Crawford had a suggestion which found favor with the council to further amend the financial institution definition to include, like walk-up ATM machines and the likes, so the ordinance version that's in front of you today does incorporate that suggestion.
Okay, thank you. And that's on page two of what we've got here, right? I'm act on machines?
Yeah, it's on the second page of the ordinance. Change itself, last underlined paragraph.
Okay. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopted ordinance amending Article 1, general provisions, Section 1-3 of the zoning ordinances by adding definitions for age-restricted residential and financial institutions.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Questions or comments?
I just have a question concerning the age-restricted, and it's just for clarification, I'm not opposed to your motion. But a couple years ago, I believe it was in Williamsburg, there was a very unfortunate situation that occurred with an age-restricted community, and where the parents of a young teenager were killed in a car crash. The only surviving relatives were grandparents who lived in an age-restricted community. And it caused a great deal of discomfort and stir in the community about whether they could have the child. And I don't recall how it was resolved, but I do know that it was a very difficult time for a lot of people trying to resolve that issue. Is that covered by this ordinance? Do we have a way?
The way out, and this is written, it's not the ownership of the unit, but the occupancy of the unit.
Yes.
So if it's, and there's also a percentage leeway. It doesn't have to be 100% occupied by age-restricted. There is a fractional number, and the Villas, for example, reports to us each year their occupancy and that they're in compliance. But even if something were to happen to me, as an age-restricted owner, and I died and left it to my children who didn't qualify as age-restricted owners, they could still rent it to an age-restricted person. They could be in compliance through the occupancy, not through the ownership.
I see.
But I think the case he was talking about was, something didn't happen to you, but put you in a position where you had to take care of a younger person.
Younger child, that was the problem.
You could still do that under our ordinance, as long as you didn't exceed the non-qualifying age level. In other words, you have to have what I think is 10%. I don't remember the exact number, but there is a percentage that has to be age-related. So you can have a certain percentage of non-age-related.
That's what I was asking about.
I think we allowed 20% in your bill.
I don't remember.
I'm pretty sure it was.
Wayne, given that situation, if the percentage was met, and then there was an unfortunate accident such as that, are there measures in place to where they can come and ask for a variance for that?
I don't know of anything that you can ask for a variance, but you understand, we are the enforcers.
Okay. All right.
It's a late eve enforcement evening.
Yes, ready.
I'm not sure of the circumstances of your example. However, it may well be that those were homeowners association covenants that the lease rent and foul law...
It could have been, yeah.
And those are enforced separate from governmental processes and can be very restricted.
Yeah.
In fact, could create the exact situation that you're talking about.
That's what I think caused all the discomfort, to say the least. Some members of the association thought it would be fine, and others said, no, you can't do it, and it was very disruptive for that community for a good while.
All we've done here is adopt the federal and state standards. So we have simply said a residential restricted unit is, and we put in the Federal Fair Housing Act, the Virginia Fair Housing Act, and there's a particular code section that we refer to which tells you how to enact it. But yes, and Randy's right, a developer could have very, he could have restrictions way more harsh than what the law is. If we allow, Buddy said 20%, I just don't remember, but the allowance under the state federal law is a percentage, that much I do remember. But you could be a developer and restrict it to 100%, owner occupied.
Within your covenants. I understand that. Okay. Any further discussion on that point? We have a motion made and seconded, I believe, and there's no other comments. And Judy, would you please take the vote?
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vennall?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, council. Now, moving on to new business, first one is something I think we've been waiting for a relatively long time here at council. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Spain Commercial Incorporated for construction of the Public Works Building, Phase One.
Mr. Mayor, let me start, as Bob comes up, let me just thank you once again, as a council, for getting, allowing us to get to this point. Your support of our employees and our significant investment in equipment is sincerely appreciated by everyone. And because no good deed comes unpunished, Mr. Speachley was the one who has been ringing the bell on this the loudest, although certainly not by himself. And so for that, we asked him to spearhead the selection committee. He did a very nice job, and I'd like to give that to him to very briefly summarize the process and his recommendation to you.
Okay, Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. For the past, as long as I can remember, we've tried to address the needs of the Public Works Parks area complex. It's gone without saying, one building in particular is in much need of repair, and that's the vehicle maintenance shed. At your March 14th meeting, we agreed to look into it and proceed. An RFP was developed. We had 10 firms responding to that request for a proposal. It's for a 140-by-50-foot building. A selection committee made up of staff met with six of those 10 firms, as they were rated, for additional clarification and interviews with the vendors. The firms come back with an adjusted cost that reflects the clarification, so there was, everybody was on the same playing field and bidding against the same thing. After careful consideration, staff recommends Spain Commercial Incorporated for the project. This resolution's allowing the city manager to sign the contract with Spain Commercial and proceed. I'll be happy to answer any questions about where we are, how we got to this point, or what you...
Any questions of council? Randy, if I could just note, for members of council, in case you accidentally put your book down on top of it, there is an amended version of this resolution at your place. The modification is in the first whereas section, and it's the addition of the words "design, build" prior to the word "construction" in the first whereas.
And that was the process that you just described?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you describe a little bit about Phase One?
Sure.
Phase One was adapted as part of the overall plan for the Public Works Parks Municipal Field Area. There's many needs for buildings and things in that area. We know everything can't be funded. We've been looking for it for year after year in CIP, it's just not there. We took this as Phase One to take a stab at it. There's an overall development plan, and this fits within it. And that's the first thing we attempted, to address the needs of all the occupants there, parks and rec, mosquito control, public works, utilities. So for this one phase, we're hoping starts the project.
Okay, thanks.
Bob, if I've got my thoughts straight about me, the day I visited you there, the shed that I was looking up through the roof on, that's Phase One?
That's the building.
Thanks for bringing it right back down to where we need to be. What is the approval of the design process before they start to build? Has that already been built into the RFP?
It's pretty straightforward in the building. We went with an RFP to request what they would propose to do. Some of the changes were, some of the vendors proposed wood framing interior, and we really preferred to steel decking. We didn't call that out, because personally, I didn't know that was available. When we saw that was a better option, we put everybody on the same playing field for that. One of the things, several things. But the city also, as a whole, will be gaining more storage area, which is desperately needed, conditioned space, and indoor storage for the salt and sand-spraying equipment. In general, just more storage space for Public Works.
After we approved the bid for Spain at $395,000, we still have enough money left over to take care of all the onsite works and the storage for chemicals.
Yes, sir, we should.
Should be plenty of money left.
There's a whole list of additional things needed to outfit the site, from site development, as you laid out, to the potential acquisition of a small forklift, and we're talking about a conditioned storage building. If we've got enough money, we may do that, but we will use it wisely, use no more than we need. But as Bob said, the first phase is, it's not a misnomer, but if you think about it as a campus compound, this is Building One. It's not a portion of Building One, it's Building One.
It's the big building.
If we keep, if we do the additional work, then we're within our legal bounds...
Yes, sir.
...to ask for the whole $600,000 in that finance pack.
100%.
Got you.
The only thing that I would like to see is considering, and you can certainly tell me that this is not necessary, but I've seen us do contracts like this before, first change order comes and you're right back. I don't see any allowance in what you've given us here to allow y'all to negotiate small...
There is.
That is in the 25% of the contract cost.
25%. Okay. I apologize.
One of the reasons to go to Design Build is it minimizes it.
Minimizes it.
It will not make it an impossibility, but it should minimize it.
Okay. So with that, we have a motion made?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I propose we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Spain Commercial Incorporated for construction of the Public Works Building, Phase One.
Second. That's as amended?
Uh...
This one?
It's amended, yeah. That's not the real one, then?
The second is amended as well?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you. Judy, would you please call?
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vennall?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Our last item under new business is an ordinance granting the lease and/or purchase of publicly-owned property located at Messick Point. This is also the second reading. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, three items to bring to your attention. First, a reminder to folks that may be watching on TV or joining us here today, there were two principal issues of discussion pertaining to this bid that we had received that were discussed by the council at the last meeting. that was discussed by the council at the last meeting. The first was to ensure that the land access way to the dock and pier itself was not contained within this land, so that we had to cross potentially private property to get to the public pier. That has been changed and taken care of through a boundary adjustment, and you'll see on the amended plat that's attached. The second issue pertained to the concern that many of these spoke to and was voiced during the public hearing by Mr. Powers, pertaining to the need to ensure appropriate and accessible bathroom access into the future and many successful chains of operators over the years and owners. What we've done, that we went back to look at the lease language, and we modified it a bit to include specific language pertaining to relocation, which was not something that was really expressed before, the concept that perhaps when we get to the point of sale, remember, this is a two-year lease purchase, there's a sale that comes as a separate executed document later, and the document that it lists now says that both the purchaser and the owner, and that's you in this case, have to be comfortable that the covenants, bonding, and other things are sufficient to maintain the public interest. So there is a process that is clearly ahead of us, should the bidder ultimately move to the purchase option. So we believe, and I don't mean to speak for the city attorney, so he'll correct me if I say it incorrectly, but we believe that there is sufficient protection to allow us to work that issue prior to any formal transfer of the deed itself sometime in the future. In the short term, if the bathrooms are compromised in any way, we've got grounds to terminate the lease, because that's part of it. So I guess what we're telling you is, we think that you've got reasonable protection because there's a process in front of us. If that does not make you comfortable, you know, we're certainly ready to modify it, but I think that we would just look for some clear language of what the council's expectation is. The bidder's here, they can say yes or no, or if they want to study it, or we need to put up, I'll talk on the language, come back shortly.
I think the section that you're calling out is on page one.
That's correct, sir.
Correct, and that's the last sentence of the thick paragraph there, where it says, "Public access to the restroom facilities and other areas used for public services shall be preserved by perpetual easement satisfactory to the seller and the purchaser." And that would be at the time of sale, would be when that is negotiated.
That's correct.
On page nine, there's additional language under section 23 on page nine. Getting a deed covenant would also cover that at the time a deed would be delivered for a purchase.
I think what we're hopeful for, and we simply didn't have time to run this all the way to ground, is that we actually may be able to find a location in very close proximity and simply move it back onto public property. Move it, mind you, at the purchaser's expense, but to maintain it. And we've had some initial conversations. The concept is good, I won't say the devil's in the details, but the details are yet to be worked out. And so that's something that we could do in the interim. And if I could, before the council considers this, I want to give you one additional suggestion. I've read and reread this document, and I know you have as well. And I did have occasion to talk to half of the bidder team, they're both here, so if they've got an issue or a difference of opinion, they'll certainly relate to you. But with respect to page nine of 10, 23, section 23, paragraph one, as presented by the bidder, the language says, "The seller agrees to allow the purchaser to remove temporary pilings located adjacent to the boat slips after taking possession of the property and to use them as the purchaser deems necessary to implement the agreed-up to uses of the property." I would suggest that you strike that from the document as you give it final consideration.
I had a question about that thing, that whole portion.
That's right, and that whole paragraph.
Oh, paragraph, yeah.
And they may want to speak to that at any time that you think that's appropriate. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor. First part, about the bathrooms, there has been additional conversations, and Port Messick is agreeable to owning the bathrooms as well as relocating them, if that'll make use of the property more flexible with our ideas and your ideas, for the bathrooms being able to be used, and as well as our being able to install the other amenities that we've mentioned already in the proposal. And with respect to the temporary poles, we've got no problem striking that from the agreement.
So no argument from the proposed developer? And I think it's good language for us to conclude. Your motion.
Mr. Mayor, the motion, my only concern was 24 hours a day, seven days a week access to clean restrooms. And as long as it says that, and I think it does, that's good we make.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, granting the lease and/or purchase of publicly-owned property located at Messick Point with the first paragraph of section 23 on page nine to be stricken.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, in seconded, adopt the motion, striking page nine, section 23, first paragraph. Any questions, comments?
I had a question. I am concerned to, I've been on the receiving end of some emails with a citizen who wants to make sure that the language in all of this does keep the restrooms available 24/7. And the one thing he pointed out to me that I think is a good question, I'm not sure I saw it addressed in here, is what if, we hope everything works out, that's our plan, but what if the purchaser defaults? I do see if the seller defaults on the agreement on page seven, but I don't see anything about should the purchaser go bankrupt or whatever. Is there naturally stuff that, would it naturally revert back to us?
It's going to be in the deed restrictions. Once the property is deeded to them, it'll be in the deed restrictions.
Okay.
So any lender loaning them money or any subsequent owner is also bound by the same restrictive covenants.
That's what I wanted to make certain of, okay.
That was what the intent was, by putting in a deed.
Right.
And we're hopeful that that point will be moot by a mutually agreeable relocation back onto public property, and then I think everybody wins.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were protecting the citizens, and that's.
Absolutely, that's the number one concern. All right, any other questions, comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. And comments of the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. I just want to thank, even though he's no longer here, Terry Hall for an excellent presentation today, work session with city council. Terry Hall is the director of the York, Pecosin, Williamsburg Joint E-911 Center. He did an excellent job, and we will be putting, we will be looping that presentation over the next couple of days, so that people have a chance to see it on the cable channel. And if we can make it work, we'll actually be putting it right on our website for people that want to see it as well. I think it was very well done, and I think, and I appreciate the council allowing us to present that to you. I don't mean to in any way steal the thunder of some of you, but I do want to thank all of the folks, including my staff, the yacht club, citizens at large, and certainly the watermen that participated in last weekend's workboat race. And I would like to thank Mother Nature, AKA the Good Lord, for the weather as well, because it was a perfect day for a workboat race, at least from a guy that wasn't out on the water, it looked to be. And having said that, I'd also thank in advance the army of people in this community that come together to put on the seafood festival, from our businesses, to our staff, to our volunteers, to our councilmen, to our vendors, to our citizens who put up with the traffic, and to actually assist us and come out to the event. Thanks in advance to really everybody. This is one of those things that requires our community's best effort, and we always get it, and we appreciate it. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Bud.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I'd like to thank Ellen for coming out tonight to make a presentation that she did not get opportunity to present, and we'll be looking forward to that when it happens. And I'd also like to welcome our new economic development director. I did not catch the name on that.
Gavazza. It's on the old charity.
Charity, okay. Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you. And I'd also like to extend my thanks also to the Pecosin Yacht Club for their efforts in the workboat races this weekend. It was really a nice event. And I'd also like to pass on some thanks to Buddy and Pat Green and Frank Creaker for some great burgers. They worked really hard down there, and I happened to sample some of those, did a great job.
Thanks, I can second everything he said. I wanted to encourage people to come to the seafood festival this weekend and stop by the Kiwanis booth, we're having our pork barbecue again. I also wanted to make a plug for the Kiwanis, they're doing a fundraiser for the food bank coming up on November the 6th, there will be a pasta dinner at the Briar Patch, and everything that, all of the proceeds will be going straight to the food bank. So if you're interested in getting a ticket for that, let me know. And I wanted to congratulate the Kiwanis again for McKenzie's run went off very smoothly this past weekend.
Carrie?
Yeah, the only other thing I could add to that was, there were three things going on, they had the boat race, fishing tournament, and McKenzie run. And just as the manager said, all the citizens just did a wonderful job.
Two things, first of all, just to add the same comment about the great afternoon of the workboat racing, and the fact that they brought in two gourmet chefs to operate the grill, I think was especially good. And on the more serious side, I just want to thank members of council, the city staff, school system staff, and so many in the community who expressed their condolences to me and to my family, on the passing of my wife two weeks ago. It shows what a really great, caring community this is, and I really appreciate it.
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the legislative day at the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank at their new facility on Aluminum Drive in Hampton, and it is a wonderful facility. Unfortunately, most of their support from the federal government and the state has been cut to the extent that Irene has just about wiped them out. What they allowed the legislators to do that day was to pack what they call the knapsacks that are sent home on the weekends for kids that are in that program. And they've had to cut back on that, they used to do that every week, now they only do it twice a week. And while I was there, Bob and Thelma Inslee from Pecosin and Victory Church were there, they are the coordinators for the food bank here in Pecosin, and we owe them a great deal of gratitude for what they do to help the people in Pecosin. And I'd urge the citizens to please consider donating to the food bank, because they are in desperate need of food. Anything that's non-perishable, canned foods, anything that kids can take home a meal in a can or a meal in a box, they particularly need those items. And this morning, I attended the legislative day for the PNU, which I have to tell you, I didn't know what it was. And.
I was waiting.
It's the Peninsula Nonprofits Unite. And a Pecosin citizen, Steve Cast, who's also the director of Boys and Girls Clubs, had this idea, and it's been in place for two years. And what it is, it's all the nonprofits, which there's about 128 of them, they don't ask for any money, they just organize amongst themselves to be a one voice to local elected officials, state officials, and federal officials, so that all 128 organizations aren't approaching these people at different times and for different things. It's a one voice thing, it was very well done. They did not ask for money from us, but they did ask us if we would read their white papers for legislation that they're going to support this year. Took my packet to Judy, and she has copies, I would encourage all of you to read it, and maybe we could pass a resolution supporting the legislation. It's, most of it's very well thought out, and something that would help benefit the people that use the facilities of these nonprofits. One of them in particular was a 40 percent tax write-off for anybody that donates an amount of money to them, say that you donated $100,000 to this organization. They would like to state to pass legislation that you would get 40 percent tax credit over 10 years. And they also want the federal government to do the same thing, so if we could lend our support to these programs, and I encourage you to read all of them, but they're all very worthwhile. And to carry on what Randy said, is I'd like to thank the watermen especially. We had 36 boats, 42 were registered, six couldn't make it, but we had 36 boats racing, and all the sponsors and volunteers, it was a very successful event, and I thank the citizens of this city for supporting it.
Thank you, Bud. Randy?
Yeah, one or two things, Mr. Mayor. Go along with your food bank, the food bank here in town, St. Kateri Takeawitha, the shelves are empty there also. So I mean, people really, you know, have been using it. And one of the scary things is military families are now going in and using the food pantries, probably not only just in Pecosin, but York County, and also, you know, wherever they are, you know, living. The other thing that Terry Hall pointed out during his presentation, or after his presentation, was that the cost of Pecosin to participate in the York, Pecosin, Williamsburg, 911 EOC has not changed since 2007. So that's a pretty good deal that we got out of that from York County. I had the opportunity last week, I think it was Thursday, to attend a Breakfast of Champions sponsored by the Department of Rehabilitative Services. They honor companies that hire individuals who have special needs. And this year, among those who they honored was, were Walmart, the Army Air Force Exchange warehouses, Centerra Williamsburg, and Hardee's. Hardee's has like 40 employees that they hire in this local area here who have special needs. And a lot of the places that they talked about and honored, they go out of their way to make access into a facility easier for an individual, so I think that's great. At the VML conference last week, and in front of you is a paper that you all handed out tonight on eminent domain. It's going to be, it was passed last year by the General Assembly, and it takes two years for it to be, the bill must pass for two years before it can appear on a state ballot for voters to vote on it as a constitutional amendment. And there are two provisions in there that can affect our community as well as other communities. It's lost profits and lost access and economic development. If you take a chance and read it later on, it's, for example, for lost profits and lost access, if a town like, I think it's Williamsburg, Winchester, who has an Apple Festival every year, they close down their main streets. A business owner, if this passes, a business owner in Winchester, say he owns a dry cleaning store, and because of the festival, he has to close down his store for three days, he can sue the city for lost profits and whatever. And it goes to other areas also. For economic development, eminent domain and the fair market value of a house does not apply if the owner realizes, or the court says, you're buying this individual's property for economic development. The owner doesn't have to sell the property for fair market value, he can sell it for whatever he wants, which can be exorbitant and can really, you know, stop a lot of developments, not only here in Pecosin perhaps, but all across the state of Virginia. This was all done because some of the members of the General Assembly felt that what we had on the books currently was not strong enough to help the citizens. So it could be quite a thing in the future. Am I missing anything on that?
No, but do you mind if I amplify a point or two? No, but do you mind if I amplify a point or two?
No.
I mean, I think we all know what eminent domain is, and I know what this city's historic posture has been. So if this was just about eminent domain, this would not be something we'd even be talking about, because it's not something that this council has done in the past, nor intends to exercise in the future, except in the most strangest and unique of circumstances. What Mr. Krieger's getting at is there's a whole other side of this bill, which is any governmental action, Christmas parade, seafood festival, a water main break, any action of government that has the effect of impairing profits or access is subject to this. So it's not simply about eminent domain. It's about a highway project that puts in a divider where one didn't exist before, thus potentially restricting access, impacting access to and across the street property. It has very far-reaching impacts beyond simply when is it appropriate for government to have eminent domain power. So it's really two things, and I think that people will, reasonable people have a difference of their perspective on whether, when, and how eminent domain should be used. And I think our community's still working on that in Virginia, and I think that's a good debate. But to me, it's the other things that also come along with this bill that really threaten to change how government does business, not in acquisition of property for economic development or schools or whatever, but it'll affect how we do road closures when we do, you know, utility repairs and so many other things. And I don't think that's been focused on as much in the debate. And so this is coming up again in the next General Assembly. If it passes, then it would be on the ballot potentially the following November as a potential constitutional amendment.
Can we make sure that we readdress this before, historically, we've had meetings with the legislators prior to legislative session. Can we touch on this? Can we put it on the calendar to touch on this subject again about a month before that, see how the bill's worded and the like?
Yes, sir.
So that we can talk to the legislators before that takes. First, let me thank the council for being at so many things and being so active as far as being out in the public eye and as far as attending things that we needed to hear about. Appreciate every one of those. I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about the workboat race. What I will tell you is that my kudos to the yacht club, my kudos to the watermen who participated, and I sincerely believe that citizens had a great time. The crowd was large, and the burgers were fair.
Come back next year.
Must've gotten one of Frank's.
But McKenzie's Run was also just as prominent, and the fishing tournament as well. What I will tell you is that's the great thing about living in the city of Pecosin. That's probably why we get national recognition as far as being a great suburb to live in, is because when the city pulls together, they pull together. And nothing pulls them together like a festival or celebration. So saying that, I look forward to seeing everybody this weekend as we work it, and as we enjoy it all together as the city of Pecosin, and look forward to seeing y'all there. I don't have anything else. Anybody?
I have one thing, Mr. Mayor. I had looked forward to coming here tonight with a big trophy, either first place, second place, or a third place trophy. From playing in the VML golf tournament, we could go Sunday. You don't see a trophy in front of me, so obviously, our team did not do very well. That's all I got. Wasn't my fault.
That's nice.
They live in Manassas and Lynchburg. They can't pick up our station here.
All right, in terms of regional cooperation, we'll just end that right here. All right, motion to adjourn?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion made in the second. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.